You are watching Access to La Porte County Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the August second, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access La Porte County dot org.
I want to call to order the meeting of August the second, twenty twenty-two of the Common Council. If you would silence your phones, and we will stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silent prayer. All right, Ms. Nyla upon the roll call.
Mr. Dabney?
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Mr. Matt?
Oh, present.
Ms. Dyche?
Present.
Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Present.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Present.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Ms. Jigus?
Present.
Ms. Tillman?
Present.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nyla. Um, moving on to the approval of the, uh, executive session minutes from July twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and approval of our hybrid Zoom July nineteenth meeting.
Motion to approve and support.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Przewlinski, a second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Dyche?
Hi.
Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jigus?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
And Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
We have nine in favor, no one opposed.
Thank you. Are there any reports of standing committees? Yes, Councilman, um, Paul Przewlinski.
Um, last week, uh, we met with on, uh, seven twenty-seven for a workshop with Streets and Alley at six thirty. Tracy Tillman was in attendance. Um, Don Przewl- Councilman Don Przewlinski, Councilman Gene Simmons. Um, Councilwoman Dolly Zega was on Zoom. The mayor was intent in, in attendance, and I believe that, uh, the, uh, controller, um, was, uh, also in attendance on Zoom. And I was in attendance. The, uh, questions of, uh, monies came up for the engineering for the, uh, uh, con- the con- no con- the payment for services. And we had an explanation by the mayor about that they did not have a, any kind of M O U or contract with the, uh, firm that he was looking at that, and he elaborated on, he had discussed that with, um, uh, Mr. Doyle from the, uh, Doyle and Associates and his longtime family friend and it was, uh, I believe some like a handshake, uh, or, uh, understanding. So, there was, um, no work to, that was done at that point. We also got into a, uh, discussion about sidewalks and, uh, money for sidewalks. And also, we got in a discussion about double track and why we're babysitting the, uh, double track and the expenditures for the double track and we, uh, uh, I will say that, um, it was a quite lively meeting and, uh, I thought that, uh, the, the council members were, uh, at their, uh, best behavior. I think that, uh, at that workshop, the, uh, people in attendance besides the council members were, uh, being, uh, rude and, uh, interjecting quite a bit. I had to, uh, I had to call them on that. But that is, uh, as we said, we have no contract or no M O U of this, uh, at this time. And, uh, I will say one comment for this whole episode is that we need more transparency in government from this administration. And there's not a problem with having a, some type of M O U or, uh, some kind of understanding when, when you're gonna sign a contract. But also is that I do understand that it's, uh, a hun- hundred thousand of dollars, so it's right at the borderline if you have to do a, uh, uh, A R, I think it's called, uh, A R P or R O P, uh, for, uh, professional services. But even if you do that, I think that you put something out what you're looking for on their responsibilities. So, that, that's what I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other reports of standing committees? All right, moving on to Finance Committee. Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, um, Madam President. The Michigan City Finance Committee meeting was held today, August second, twenty twenty-two. Those in attendance was Councilman Paul Przewlinski, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, and myself, Tracy Tillman. And funds from two zero four two Riverboat Claims in the amount of four hundred and eighty dollars. E F T zero dollars. Fund number two zero three one Boyd Development zero dollars. E F T zero dollars. Total claims, four hundred and eighty dollars. A motion was passed with three to zero of approving. Um, also, there was conversation, um, Madam President, you asked me to, um, gather some information in regards to the lit funds. And I was able to do so. I actually reached out to, um, the La Porte County Auditor, Mr., um, Mr. Stav- Tim Stabos. And he forwarded my questions on to Mr. Fred Van Dorp of the D L G F. And if I may read those, read the responses, the questions and the response. Question one, is this a tax that will come out of people's paychecks? And when and how does that get dispersed to the other town, cities, et cetera? Yes, the local tax lit is generated from the payroll withholding. The money is collected by the Department of Revenue, but then is distributed monthly from the state to the county, then from the county to the local government. For the public safety distribution, the money will be distributed to the county, cities, and towns in La Porte based on each unit's levy. Question two, and when is this supposed to start? Both the payroll withholdings and the monthly distributions are based on when the county adopts the change. If the lit change is adopted between January first and August thirty-first, then the withholding rate means the rate that the taxpayers will see will change on October first. If the lit change is adopted between September first and October thirty-first, then the rate will change on January first. The distribution follows a similar path. If the rate is adopted between January first and October thirty-first, then the county, cities, and towns will start seeing a monthly distribution on January first. If the rate change is adopted after November first, then the distribution won't start until January first of the next year. Question three, and does the rate need to be changed in our payroll program so that it is reflected in the payroll checks? The D O R releases guidance to the employers about withholding rate. The D O R memo number zero one is released twice a year to correspond with the rate changes, meaning that the memo is released on October first and January first. That's all, Madam President.
Thank you. Did you cover any other, um, financial matters in, in the meeting?
Uh, we did have, um, in attendance Controller Hoffmaster and the Planning Director Skylar York. And that is in regards to the lit, because I did, um, ask that question from Controller Hoffmaster, but that information, um, of the timeframes had not been, um, disclosed to her as of yet. But I was able to obtain that information. And then with, um, the Planning Director, Mr. York, we discussed the resolution that is gonna come before us to request funds that he currently have in his budget to be transferred into another line item to purchase vehicles.
All right, thank you. Is there, um, so we have on our claims docket, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, Fund Twenty Forty-two Riverboat Claims for a total of four hundred and eighty dollars. There are no, uh, items for E F T or Fund Twenty Thirty-one. So total claims are four hundred and eighty dollars. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to approve, support.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Przewlinski and a second by Brian De- Councilman Brian Dabney. Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Dyche?
Hi.
Mr. Don Przewlinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jigus?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you.
Madam Pre- Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, if I may, uh, can I ask a question of Councilwoman Tillman?
Yes, please do so.
Person of the Finance Committee. Uh, have you, in, in any of your meetings, uh, lately, have you ever been updated on what the amount is in the Riverboat balance or the Boyd Development?
Um, yes. One. Currently, the grand total ending balance is one million, seven hundred seventy-one thousand, eight hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. And this is from the City of Michigan City Riverboat Statement of Cash Positions Fiscal Year to Date, August second, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. I know that that wasn't, was that sent out? I don't remember seeing that as an email.
It was not. It was, um, dispersed out to the, uh, council members today. This, before the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any reports of any special or select committees? I was wondering what you were getting up for. All right, all right, uh, ooh, okay. Um, all right, any reports from mayor or other city officers and departments? And I know we, um, are supposed to have a presentation, but I don't see them here. Um,
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, they did, uh, contact me or I, I got a, uh, text that something came up that, uh, Rich could, could not, um, Commissioner Mozinski could not make it.
Okay.
He, he will be, uh, letting me know. And I'll further pass it on to you when, when they can, uh, coordinate it.
All right.
Be here. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Chief Lagone?
Good evening, Council President, all council members. Doug Lagone, Michigan City Fire Chief. I'm gonna give you a quick report. Uh, our call volume to date, we've had a total of two thousand, three hundred and ninety-five calls this year in two thousand and twenty-two. That's a seven percent increase from last year at this time. Uh, for the month of July alone, we had three hundred and eighteen calls. Uh, fire, uh, eighteen fire calls that needed extinguishment, two hundred and thirty-eight EMS rescue calls, twelve hazardous condition with no fire involved in that, nine service calls, thirty-six good intent calls, four false alarms, and one special incident. But most of all, I'd like to thank all of you for the support in the increase in my W G salary. Greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Can I, can we ask you a question or two? I don't know if anybody has any questions. But as far as the, the number of actual fires that have been extinguished, have you seen an uptick in that?
Yes.
In the number of fires?
Especially for the, for the, the month of July, yes.
Okay.
And that, that includes all, I mean, that's all fires that need extinguishment. We have a lot of structured fire calls that don't amount to anything.
Okay.
But these are actual fires, so yes, that is an increase.
All right, thank you. Councilman Don?
Uh, question, chief, uh, where do we stand on the, uh, dope, uh, the drug?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm, I'm glad you said that. Um, I was not able to get you anything for the overdose calls.
Overdose call?
Yes.
All right.
Uh, my, uh,
Categorize it. You know what I mean?
Yes, my P I O officer, Nick Bonn, is real close to being able to get it in our system so that we can require our captains or our officers to actually put that in our reports. So then I will be able to get you an accurate number for just the City of Michigan City. So he's, he's talking to the company right now, and he hopes to get that figured out. He, he doesn't think it's gonna be a problem. So then I won't have to rely on, on EMS.
Yeah.
So I, I hope to have something for you next month. I'm glad you reminded me that was one thing I wanted to mention.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilman Tracy Tillman? Okay, all right, thank you. Any, um, other reports from mayor or city officials, departments? All right. Uh, Ms. Nyla, petitions?
The following petitions were received in the clerk's office on July twenty-sixth. Petition of the Northern Indiana Public Service Company, NIPSCO, to vacate a portion of the public street in the City of Michigan City located north of the intersection of Superior Avenue and Nippersink Avenue. A petition was also received from Northern Indiana Public Service Company to vacate portions of public street in the City of Michigan City located south and east of the improved terminus of Edgewood Avenue and west and north of the West Terminus of Westchester Court.
Thank you. And everybody should have received a copy of those. Any communications?
No communications this evening.
Right, thank you. First resolution by, do you want to read this, Councilman Don, the resolution in its entirety for NIPSCO? So, um, if so, count, um, Ms. Nyla, um, by title only, the resolution opposing proposed NIPSCO rate hike. And then I'll have Councilman Don read it in its entirety.
A resolution by title only opposing proposed NIPSCO rate hikes. And this is introduced by Ms. Dyche, Mr. Don Przewlinski, Ms. Jigus, Ms. Tillman, Mr. Paul Przewlinski, Mr. Dabney, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Matt, and Mr. Simmons.
And the entire Michigan City City Council, uh, stands behind this resolution. So, whereas Northern Indiana Public Service Company, NIPSCO, in cause, in case number four, five, seven, zero, zeros requesting the I U R C approval to close five ash ponds at its Michigan City Generating Station and recover the closure and remediation cost of forty million, forty million dollars through rate increases. Whereas, the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission is currently seeking public comments recording regarding the proposed rate hike. And whereas, NIPSCO wants residential cup customers to pay more than their fair share of these costs compared to big commercial and industrial customers. And whereas, the Common Cost Council passed Resolutions forty-seven eighty-one and forty-eight twelve, setting forth recommendations and seeking a full environmental cleanup. Now, therefore be resolved by the Common Council of Michigan City, Indiana as follows. Number one, that the City of Michigan City, Indiana opposes a proposed increase to NIPSCO rate due to the adverse impact it would have on families struggling to pay existing utility bills. The NIPSCO, that NIPSCO should revise their proposed closure plan to include the full removal of all two million cubic yards of historic fill containing coal ash along the lakefront at their Michigan City Generating Station. And that the city clerk is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to public comments of the Indiana Office of Utility Consumer Counselor via email, uh, u c c i n f o at o u c c dot i n dot gov or by mail at Consumer Services Staff, Indiana Office of Utility Consumer Counselor, one fifteen West Washington Street, Suite fifteen hundred South, Indianapolis, Indiana, four, six, four oh two. The res- this resolution shall be in full force and effect after passage by the Michigan City Common Council and the approval by the mayor.
Any comments from the sponsors? Yes, Councilwoman, um, Tracy Tillman?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, you got comments, discounts, comments from the sponsors. Yes, Councilman Paul?
I, uh, would like to say that I, I cannot honestly believe the, uh, what NIPSCO wants to do on, on the, uh, asking for forty million dollars on that cleanup project. And, uh, you know, they, they've always come to the customers for, uh, rate hikes increases. And I think that they've known about this for years. And it's been an environmental hazard. It's caused many people in the pines to have actual, they, they justified it, have, uh, come down with cancer because it's polluted their wells out there on the ash on the streets. And they did not want to pay for, uh, putting a, I think it's obnoxious that they wouldn't pay for another main to go on the south side of Highway twelve for people that are right next to the area where they really put a lot of that ash down on the streets. And, uh, uh, it's just, the, it's always come to, coming instead of doing the right thing, they wanna come to the customers. And I think that we need, uh, go ahead, and I know everybody, we're gonna vote for this. But I, I think that a lot of people, um, a lot of customers need to get educated. There's a lot of people, I think, that don't realize what's going on here. I, I, I think that a lot of people are in the dark. So, that's kind of ironic statement I was gonna make, tear in the dark on this subject. But we need to go forward through, uh, on this process and do whatever we have to do with the, uh, Utility Regulatory Commission. Thank you.
Any other comments from the sponsors?
I would like to make a couple comments, Madam President. Uh, first of all, I want to thank all the folks that showed up last night at the rally that we had, uh, right out here uh, by the old, uh, News Dispatch. And also at the meeting with the U R C, I would say that there were probably a hundred folks in attendance last night. Uh, the council chambers was full, which was nice to see. But I was hoping for more people. I would think everyone in the community, everyone in the community, everyone on the council, the mayor, everybody would be up in arms over this. This rate increase is not only gonna affect all of us, it's gonna affect the poor, the underprivileged. You know, Michigan City, well, I know it has a thirty, thirty-five percent, uh, poverty rate, hundred percent, uh, food assistance at school, in the schools. So, how can we afford forty million dollars? The other thing that does, and I don't know if the city controller understands it yet, or the mayor understands it, but any rate hike that deals with us is also gonna deal with the city. Our rates are gonna go up. I believe back in twenty nineteen, that when we were also fighting to another NIPSCO rate increase, the city controller at that time said, if it goes through, it'll cost us another hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on our utility bill. So I don't know exactly what this one will cost, but I'm sure it's gonna be in the neighborhood of over a hundred thousand dollars. When you start doing that, now we're talking about money that could go for raises, money that could go for park equipment, money that could go for supplies anywhere in the city. So this is gonna affect the whole community and especially, NIPSCO made the mess. NIPSCO made the mess. NIPSCO should clean the mess up. They should have had it in their business plan. They knew that someday, that this, this hazardous waste, coal ash is a hazardous waste. And that they should have had it in their plan that one day, they were gonna have to clean up that two million tons of coal ash that sits out there on the lakefront and is possibly leaching through those steel walls that they would have to clean it up. And that's where I stand on this, and there's no turning back. NIPSCO has to pay the whole bill and a hundred percent cleanup. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the sponsors? Right, um, comments from the public?
Tommy Klawick from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I just want to respond to what Councilman Paul Przewlinski said about the people in the pines coming down with the cancer from the, from the coal ash. Uh, the groundwater also in the town of Westville is contaminated. Don't drink the wa- groundwater, the well water from the town of Westville. There was the old former Camel or Oil Refinery on Highway two. They connect, they, the, the, the water and what, it's all contaminated. Don't drink. People are coming to, saw my sister pass away. She got leukemia. She battled for three years and she died just three days after Christmas in twenty eighteen. So I just want to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klawick.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Shame on NIPSCO, shame on NIPSCO, shame on NIPSCO. We all been experiencing NIPSCO nonsense. We have to clean it up. I don't know, I'm like most people, what recourse do we have? Um, some people use this as a political stunt, I'm pretty sure. Shaw Freeman, uh, Ms. Mateus will probably be filing something in court to try to stop something. And no matter what, the attorney gets paid, but the residents don't get relief. Um, can you tell us? That's why the public probably don't show up because what, they, they wanna do it anyway. But I hope when they do start this, that we act like Big Brother and make sure they do it right. And no more other people get sick. Once you start stirring that stuff up and it gets in the air, what's gonna happen to us? There's a lot of things here that we need to really report and get into and, and find out what's going on. Maybe use some of that A R P money to hire an attorney. I don't know. But something needs to happen and, uh, God bless us all and I just want to have that.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Just state your name and address.
Hello, I am Daniel Cohen from eight thirty-six, eight sixteen, my bad, uh, eight sixteen Madison Street. I have one question. So obviously, like Michigan is a large lake, of one of the many large lakes. Boy, if there's two million tons of coal ash in said lake, ah, uh, I'm sorry, Fran. Um, if there's two million tons of coal ash in said lake, is it not possible that I could drift from here to Chicago to Lake Michigan? Or not Lake Michigan, Michigan State? And possibly lake to the soil and just spread? It's two million tons, right? And it's water, and water loves to spread things. It's water, it's liquid. So, could this not affect any other surrounding states or countries?
I, I know you're asking a question, um, and it's a, it's actually a barrier. Suppo- there is a barrier that, um, is between the NIPSCO plant and Lake Michigan. So, there is a barrier, but technically it could leach out. And that's what the councilman was, was saying, that it could leach into the water. And if it leaches into the water, it could spray.
So if this barrier fails, then this lake turns into a giant pond of sulfur and mercury? Wonderful. Wonderful. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking up.
Uh, I overheard that you were uh, here tonight to uh. Are you working, are you a boy scout and?
Yes, sir.
Are you working on uh, what badge are you working on?
Communication.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all council members and, and Ms. Scale for providing me the agenda. It helps a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for participating. Any other comments from the counts, I mean, from the uh, public? Anybody online? Anybody online? None? All right. Uh, comments from the council, Councilman uh, Brian Dabney.
I was just sending in your other comments, so now I was gonna say motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second by Councilman Paul Przewlinski. Ms. Nile up on the vote.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
Mr. Don Przewlinski.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jigas.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
And Mr. Matt.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Uh, resolution passes. Ms. Nile of second resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only approving submission of application for a grant. City of Michigan City from the Indiana Department of Transportation. For the twenty twenty-two Community Crossing Matching Grant Program and supporting the local match for said grant. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Don Przewlinski.
Um, just to note that the, this proposed resolution was tabled at our last meeting on July nineteenth. Uh, until a Streets and Alley Committee uh, meeting was held, which was last week on the twenty-seventh, I believe. So it's brought back to the table today, August second, twenty twenty-two. Um, do the sponsors have any comments?
I uh, I just have. Well, one comment and I got my answer or my question answered at the uh, the workshop. From the mayor, because what my concern was, was uh, Doyle and Associates doing the. Engineering work. For the beginning of this project, doing the initial paperwork. And if it was being done uh, without a signed contract. Uh, and then come to find out from the mayor that there, there was no contract. And that Mr. Doyle was just looking over the paperwork. Uh, that was left by Jeff Wright to make sure that it was all done properly. And that Mr. Doyle would not be sending the city a bill. Mr. Doyle will not be sending the city a bill. So I got my answer or my question answered uh, to that and that's what my concern was. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just add to that. Um, I know I was actually at the meeting for part of the meeting. And that uh, Controller Hoffmaster also shared that she was inputting the information for the grant into the system as well. Um, are there any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, no comments from the public. Comments from the council. Yes, Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, there was one other thing that was um, discussed. Or we touched bases on during the finance um, committee meeting and that was this. And one of the things that Controller Hoffmaster uh, was asked to provide to the council members was um. She was going to prepare a draft contract um, that will model this contract. That Mr. Doyle had previously, but with the request of Councilman Paul Przewlinski. He would like to see language in the paperwork that gives a clear descriptive. As to what all that engineer would be responsible or duties would cover. So she uh, Controller Hoffmaster said that she would reach out to um, the corporate attorney. To um, to get a cop, to get a draft contract of what would be presented. And that is needed, the appropriation needs to be approved in order to move forward. To take it in front of, on the second reading in front of the board of words.
Okay. Um, I, I guess I. And I, and maybe Controller Hoffmaster, she in here? Okay. All right, um, I guess my only, only concern with all of everything that was just suggested. Some of this is not, uh, seems like it's a little bit of overreach, so I'm not sure, um. Where we all, what we're saying in trying to dictate the contract. I mean, it's C C M G, we've been doing this now for a couple of years, so. I guess that's my, my only concern. So all right, any additional comments from the council? Yes, yes, Councilman Don.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my last comment on this whole process. Is after looking at the list that the council received. And then by going out and looking at the streets that are gonna be blacktopped. The Pazer system, although required by the state to get this grant money. To me, the Pazer system from Michigan City and these streets need to be re-inspected. Now, if I heard the mayor properly, if he's got the right information, he said that that is redone every two years. If that's the case, then that'll be coming up again next year and these streets will be reevaluated. So I just want to make sure that the council's aware of that. Now, when this comes back before us, then we make sure that this Pazer system and these streets. And some engineer is gonna be hired to go out and reevaluate. The streets, because I know there's some streets that are worse than others. That are not getting blacktopped and should be getting blacktopped. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Paul.
Um, with, with the comments and I appreciate uh, Councilwoman uh, Tillman bringing that up. Is that we're not trying to dictate anything, we're just trying to have uh, what I asked for is a. M O U or something that the uh, is in the description that. To take input from the council members to make sure that council members, if they have a question. They have, they get answers.
Oh, we're talking about the engineer?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I got it.
Not the.
Okay.
Grant, the grant is a, you know, a process that actually an engineer, I don't even think has to sign off on. All right, because that used to be handled by the planning department, if I'm not mistaken. But anyway, um, I, I think that. There needs to be transparency in government and that's what I'm pushing for. There's transparency and cooperation and uh, I think that. Uh, I, I try to cooperate with people and I think the administration needs to cooperate, so. Um, I, I am all for paving and I, yeah, I think that. What Councilman Don Przewlinski said, there are streets in Michigan City and Main Thoroughfares. That need to be paved right now, that have been overlooked. That have, if you understand anything about paving, when they receive cracks that are over a half inch wide. That, that in the report of the book that I handed out at the initial workshop. Is way beyond the standard for even uh, crack sealing uh, those cracks. So we have a big problem on the understanding because there's been no crack seal done. That I know of since we took office. And so now, when you don't crack seal a road. You have water leaching down into the bed and the underlayment of that road. So what it does, it just deteriorates. It keeps deteriorating. And I'll give you a perfect example, the north end of Michigan City, which I don't represent. But I'm aware of how nasty them roads look on Washington Street. And uh, especially Washington Street between um. Highway twelve and, and the uh, eleventh street. You gotta, you have another thing that we, we brought up at the meeting. We brought up about sidewalk work. I don't think any sidewalk work took place this year. We'll go down the main street, all those corners are not A D A compliant. So I just want to put that out there that I do observe different areas of Michigan City. And, and then I'm very disturbed that uh, Wall Bath Street South. Which isn't in my ward, Cool Spring, to uh, Al's is not being done. Because that road is severely what they have, what they call alligatoring on that road. It's totally, it is coming apart. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, I, I will say that um, I'll be glad when we get an engineer on board. So that we can move forward and get him sidewalks in these streets done, so um, any other comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Support.
We have a motion by, motion by Councilman Don uh, Przewlinski and a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nile up on the vote.
Mr. Don Przewlinski.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jigas.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
And Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. Ms. Nile of our third resolution by title only.
Resolution by title only, fourth addition to the initial plan for the use of portion of the city's allotment. Of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for various matters. Including but not limited to community grant funding for small businesses and nonprofits. City projects, equipment improvements for certain city departments. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Dabney and Ms. Jigas.
Any comments from the sponsors? I, I'll, I'll make a comment then. Um, this came um, from our, our committee. Uh, as a uh, some recommendations that came out of um, our committee. And to do that, you always have to adjust your plan for the buckets um, in a resolution before you get to the appropriation. So this is the resolution to update the initial plan. For the use into the different buckets uh, uh, that are um, approved by federal government. As far as ARP is concerned. All right, any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Uh, comments from the public? Comments from the council? Any comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul Przewlinski.
Um, I uh, as I was looking at this uh, resolution. I uh, wanted to point out that. We uh. Do not have any money in here. Um, or. The removal of the lead. Goose necks or whatever they want to call them, that affect, I, I believe over fifteen hundred homes in Michigan City. And I also. Have an issue, I don't have an issue, um, I don't see any. Engineering or any money being designated for uh, completion. Of a sewer project in the second ward that should be taking place. Because that's what the most, a lot, this money is supposed to be used for. Or the specifics is water in a sewer. I have a problem with uh, spending. Two hundred, uh, two million five hundred thousand for water to annex property. When people in um, Lakeland are still without service. So I, I think that, you know, yeah, we do, do need to do certain things. And I'm all, I'm all, I want to see the uh, uh. Some of the systems in here for uh, uh, service to impact our communities, get taken care of. But uh, I, I truly believe that. There's more investigation that needs to be done for this infrastructure improvement out to this four hundred and twenty acres. That has a huge pristine wetland in it, over a twenty acre wetland out there. So. At, at this time, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, table this or to uh. Have an additional, to table it, to have an additional workshop before our next council meeting.
We have a motion on the floor to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman, Ms. Nile up on the vote.
Mr. Simmons.
Nay.
Mr. Ms. Jigas.
Nay.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Nay.
Mr. Matt.
Nay.
Ms. Deitch.
Nay.
And Mr. Down, Przewlinski.
Nay.
We have two in favor and seven opposed.
All right, so any additional comments from, um, before anybody moves to approve? I do have a comment um, to, to make. Uh, so, so there's a lot in this and I, I will say that. This, this plan can be updated at every meeting for, I mean, it's a resolution. So if there are other items that um, the administration will put forward, um. With this appropriation that's coming up, we're gonna be just on first reading. Um, those additions still can be made and, and another plan can be put forward. So it doesn't, it doesn't mean that, that um, those things that Councilman Paul Przewlinski has brought up. Um, won't get into the appropriation. We do have a workshop scheduled for five o'clock. Um, on the eleventh of August to discuss these items and to see presentations for them. Um, already and um, the time, I want to move it back. Because there could be a conflict with the finance committee at that time. So um, I will try to make some adjustments, but I want to make sure that the administration. Um, was able to participate fully as well, so we may have to finagle the time a, a little bit on the eleventh. Um, of next week, um, because of your meeting uh, that you have. So um, with that being said, any additional comments from the council?
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just wanted to say that in regards to uh, me requesting to have this table. Is I, there are some things that are listed on here that I am in wholeheartedly in support of. There are some additional things that is now listed on here and I would like to see. Uh, what will be provided at the next workshop to um, warn and to justify that. The request of the dollar amount that's being asked for.
And that is the intent of the workshop. Any additional comments? Yes, Councilwoman Jigas.
I just want to add, you're not spending the entire amount of money, so there is still money that can be allocated for other projects. This is not the whole thing.
Yes, Councilman Paul Przewlinski.
Um, with, with that comment being made is uh, I, I, I do understand that. And a point and uh, for the chair is that. Our next finance meeting, I believe, is on the sixteenth or is that our, is that our council meeting, the eleventh? So anyway, um, there's a. More, there's more in here, because I cannot understand. I cannot understand why we have a tunnel.
Cuz I cannot s- understand, I cannot understand why we have a tunnel. Underneath Lafayette Street that was supposed to be used for that um. Sewer project and it's there and we're paying a bond issue on it. I don't know exactly what we owe right now. On that. But I do know this, is that. The previous engineer came up with a plan to uh do something and try to use that system. For the uh Lafayette sewer project that involves the eastern part. Of the second ward into the fifth ward of Michigan City, which was been lying there. For quite a few years, just sitting in the ground, not doing anything. So. You know, the, it needs to be taken care of, but the sanitary district. Can worry about spending money to engineer a sewer project. In Long Beach, but they can't even assist the residents of the city of Michigan City. Something is wrong here. All right, something is definitely wrong. And also that. The administration knows that that thing is sitting in the ground in that sewer project. Mister Doyle did the initial map and they never did anything about engineering, so. This is a problem, but I'll, I'll tell you again. What Mister Cuss told me two weeks before he left office, they capped off all these inlets. To the combined sewers, so there'd be no complaints over there anymore. You know, it's it's sad, but that's what happens. You know, so we're not getting complaints, but that doesn't mean the pro- problem doesn't exist, so. When you separate those sewers though, then you have less influence. Coming into the plant. And there's a viable plan out there. And um, excuse me. I believe that Mister Beal was at. The border works meeting the other day. That there's another section of the second ward that not all that water needs to go north. But that it should actually go south. Thank you.
Thank you, um Councilman Paul Privilinski, and I wholeheartedly agree with you on the Burke Lafayette. Sewer project that we need to move something forward. Um any additional comments from the council? That being said.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman.
Second.
The second by Councilwoman Dahlia Jigges. Ms. Nyla upon the vote.
Mister Jigges.
Aye.
Mister Paul Privilinski.
Nay.
Ms. Tillman.
Nay.
Mister Dabney.
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mister Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mister Don Privilinski.
Aye.
And Mister Simmons.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and two opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Moving on to the fourth resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the. Planning and Inspection Department of the General Fund one zero zero one. For the year twenty twenty two in Michigan City, Indiana, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
And I will move to, straight to public comment as that uh Mister York uh make a few comments.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh good afternoon, council. Um can everybody hear me? Uh Skylar York, Director of Planning, uh so this is a uh. Uh simply taking money from one line item and moving it to another line item within our existing budget. Um. Uh contractual services and it's coming out of our um fund for uh. Uh for uh pay, for payroll. And this is uh basically, our our vehicles are kind of on their last leg right now. We usually get hammy downs from police department. Well, if police department's transitioning into lease, we won't have hammy downs coming down the line eventually. So rather than spend costly repairs right now on vehicles that really aren't worth the repair that we're trying to make to them. Such as a transmission, tire rods, uh uh the computer systems are going out, things of that nature. Um it just makes sense to go ahead and transition into a lease situation where we will have a three-year lease period, contractual period. Uh we, it'll be under warranty, covers everything for three years. Uh saves the city money. Uh we're not putting costly repairs into vehicles that are not worth. The the repair essentially. So that's where we're at right now. Um we'll be trading in. Uh I think seven vehicles, we'll be getting back five of them, we'll be keeping our uh our Colorado truck. Cuz we need a truck to haul things and signs. We pick up things from rare, from time to time that you guys ask us to pick up and. Public access to pick up, so we we participate in that. Um other than that, that's, that's it. Any other questions you have, I'll entertain.
Yes, Councilman Don.
Uh yeah, Mister York. Uh with the trading in of your vehicles that you say are in such poor conditions and I don't know how many miles are on them and. Yeah, you know, what has to be repaired? Has uh Cranston Harris been involved in your discussions as far as getting rid of these vehicles? Or he can.
Yes.
Fix the vehicles and they can still last. You know, a while longer. I don't, let me, let me just finish, let me just finish, okay? Is that, and and and, you know, I don't know how far the inspection department. Has to drive every day. I don't think they're driving to. The port or Gary or what have you, they're generally driving within the confines of Michigan City, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, you know, for example, what what are the miles that you have on these vehicles that you're wanting to get rid of?
Quite, quite a few miles. I can't, I don't have the exact miles, but I can tell you right now, there is transmission that needs to be replaced, it's just. More costly than the car is worth, and we have talked to Mister Cranston Harris. It would be more advantageous, he's on, he's in favor of this. It'd be more advantageous to to trade them in right now, uh or trade them in and get money for them, get a, get some price for them. Uh back uh worth or value uh rather than. Put a new transmission and that's more costly, so he is in favor of this, of this proposal.
Okay. Yeah, cuz I value his uh.
A- absolutely.
His opinion very much cuz he's the one that controls the fleets and repairs everything and knows exactly what's being spent. On uh on everything. And yeah, just, just a general comment. Uh to the administration, to the council, that when, when a department head wants to come in front of uh. The city council and talk about vehicle replacement, I think that Mister Harris should be here with them. To answer any questions on any vehicles that uh. Departments are trying to get rid of. I mean, you know, I could ask you a question, but you don't know the exact.
I'm not a mechanic, so.
Yeah, and I understand that, uh Skylar. But if Cranston was here, he could answer the questions, you know, right off the top of his head, so that's what I think. That's the direction I want to start going in, is to make sure Mister Harris is here, so he can answer questions. And give us valid proof that we need to get rid of uh vehicles.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions for um Mister York? Yes, Councilwoman Tillman.
Um not necessarily a direct question, but I just wanted to bring um to the attention that in the original resolution. There was an um oversight and Controller Hofmester made the correction, so with an amendment request. It state where, whereas the exists certain circumstances within the budget of the engineer of the general fund. And it should have stated the budget of the planning and inspection department of the general fund.
Yeah, because it's not uh germane to. We don't, it it could just be an author's amendment. It doesn't have to go through the process because there is no financial uh change.
Okay.
So we're, we're good on that.
Did, did you get an updated copy of it? Okay.
All right, any, any additional comments for Skylar, cuz we still have public comment? All right, yes.
Okay, uh Skylar and I exchanged uh some thoughts at the, we're uh at our finance meeting. And. I will say this publicly that if you reexamine that quote in uh. Look at the four cylinders, that I would be more than glad to sponsor that. Because I think it's more advantageous instead of a V six.
And I'm, I'm gonna look at it, uh again, I I'm not a mechanic or a.
Right.
Bargary, but we, I, we will do that.
Right, or are you guys just gonna, are you guys just gonna take what you can get off the lot?
N- no, I think these are uh, no, no, the answer is no, uh from the, from the preferred, the preferred dealer. Uh of the quotes, uh I I believe we are getting. They're providing what we're asking for, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think they're being selected straight off the lot, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
And there's similar, Laporte's doing the same thing, uh for their, I believe they, their, their inspection department does the same. I believe they're. It's the same provider, so he's used to providing fleet vehicles, if you will.
Okay.
But I will get you those in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional uh questions for uh Mister York? All right, with that, so, yes.
I'll try to get Cranston here, Don, at our next meeting, just so he can kinda go through some of the things that are happening on a regular basis.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Just for knowledge, general knowledge, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Thank you, uh Mister York. Any additional comments from the public on this resolution? No? Any comments from the council?
Motion to accept the resolution.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman and a second by Councilman Don Privilinski, Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Mister Paul Privilinski.
Aye.
Mister, Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mister Dabney.
Aye.
Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mister Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mister Don Privilinski.
Aye.
Mister Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jigges.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. Resolution passes.
Yeah, Madam President.
Yes.
Yeah, if I may, uh Mister York, I mean, the resolution's passed and you don't need to get a hold of. Mister Harris to come to the next council meeting. I can, I can talk to him on my own. Yeah, yeah, I understand that and I heard you say that, but I can get a hold of Mister Harris uh by myself. He lives right across the street. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Nyla, um first ordinance on first reading.
And ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local income tax. Economic development formerly known as CEDIT Fund for On Call Engineering Services with. Uh John A. Doyle and Associate Primera Engineering, uh and this is introduced by Ms. Jigges.
So let me um note that this ordinance was tabled at our last meeting on July nineteenth, uh first reading and was referred. To the Finance Committee for review, recommendation will be brought back. August second, twenty twenty two. I don't think there's a formal recommendation. Um I know it was also discussed at the workshop um last week on, on July twenty seventh. Um this actual ordinance, uh proposed ordinance was advertised in a herald dispatch. On July twentieth, twenty twenty two, and hopes for a formal public hearing to be held this evening. So with that being said, does the sponsor have any comments?
Uh no, until we get a city engineer that can do, you know, the, the things that we really need to do. I think we need to hire somebody on a per case basis. You know, every time we need somebody, we have to pay them. Until we get a city engineer, and I'd love to get a city engineer.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the council? Any comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Don.
Yeah, I I have a question. I don't know if it'll be able to be answered here, but. You know, I, I don't wanna keep having appropriations coming in front of us. And we have to keep paying out more and more money every three months, every quarter, what have you, another two hundred grand for uh. Engineering services. Uh what is the, are, are there no, no one in, at all? Interested in becoming an engineer? Are we not offering enough money? What, are there no engineers available? What seems to be the uh? The issue with trying to get a uh engineer here in Michigan City? We've never had this problem. Uh before, so I don't know exactly what's. Why, what the problem is. Has anybody even been interviewed for city engineering?
Am I asking if it's been posted?
I.
Yes.
I don't know, the mayor's here, he should probably know what the case is with uh. You know, city engineer, I mean, that's one of the top administrative positions in the city.
All right, thank you, um thank you, Mayor Perry.
Uh Mayor Wayne Perry, the problem with getting a city engineer is that it's. Listed in the job description has always been as a part-time position at seventy thousand dollars, in that range. And we've been lucky in the past that we've gotten in, local engineers. That were at the end of their career, like Boyd Phelps had a large firm, and so he wasn't. Really, he wasn't really aggressive at that point in his career in building his business. Um that's, that's the issue we have, that a practicing engineer makes well over a hundred thousand a year. Uh I don't know exactly how much, it's a function of how much work they're given. But they make, they, they, they make well above what we were offering. So to get a city engineer, we're gonna have to up the ante probably a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen thousand and make it a full-time. Uh position. We've advertised for this, we've advertised it indeed, we've advertised in LinkedIn. And we're advertising throughout the internet of, of Purdue University Cali campuses. But we're, we're probably not gonna be very successful unless we get someone that, a, 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 a newly. Um registered engineer and the, and the process for that is, it's not getting someone fresh out of school because. Once, when a student finishes their, their degree in engineering, they take what's called the. Engineer and Training Test, E I T. When they pass that, then they have to wait several years to take the professional engineer's test. There's a cycle that they go through. And to get someone that's just passed the professional engineer's test. Is, is gonna be difficult. If we do get someone, he won't have very much experience. I'm hoping that if we get someone that, that would be interested at that stage of their career. We could sandwich them between the experience of Brad Minnick and John Doyle and, and groom them. But just as we lost other people be, in our administration because of money. We're gonna lose engineers unless, a, a city engineer, unless we make a drastic adjustment. So I think I've competently answered the question why we don't have one.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll add that if uh, if. For engineers, you know, that come out, they are, they're expecting, especially if they pass exam. Well over a hundred thousand dollars and if she, you know, can't, if we can't hire her or him. Uh because there are female engineers, y'all, um that uh. That um could possibly have this position, we'll, we'll never get a full-time engineer unless we're paying a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That has a P E, um so I just wanted to add that too, so.
Well, and just one more point, I mean, what we're doing here, we're appropriating a hundred fifty thousand. Okay, for two. I'll call them part-time engineers, right? They're not full-time, they're not on the city payroll, so. We could be paying a full-time city engineer a hundred and twenty thousand and saving money right here. So I think that's something that the administration needs to look into. Uh the next, the next budget cycle and see what we can do, get that taken care of.
Well, let me respond to that then also. Of what we have right now, we're retaining two professional engineers. To handle an enormous scope work. The Double Track is a billion-dollar project that extends twenty-three miles through Michigan City. It's double-track. Through Michigan City, it's double-track and it's, it's quite extensive. Uh, Mister Minnick has reached the limit of his current contract. And we're nowhere near completing the double-track, that's why an additional fifty thousand dollars is being added to that, and. Engineer John Doyle will be focusing primarily. On the community crossings, paving sidewalks, that work, but he will also. Handle any other work that comes up that's needed, we don't know what work is gonna come up. We don't, because we encounter problems all the time. The city and, the, 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 we don't really need a city engineer except for two reasons, there are two seats. That by state statute have to be filled with a, with. A person holding the seat of city engineer, that's a sanitary district board and the planning commission. If those two seats weren't controlled by state statute and you could merely put. A P E in there, a cer, a professional engineer, we would have no issue at all. We could continue as we are using engineers as needed. Which has a benefit to us because then we don't pick up their benefits either, their benefits are built into their rate and we don't have to pick them up. So again, I think I've answered your question.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any uh, additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilman?
Yeah, I had a quick question, uh, Mary, you said that. Engineers are being paid for double-tracking, what are we, what are they doing for double-tracking our engineers at this time? Cause I'm thinking that uh. The NICD and, and the, the funding that we've all given before should be paying.
Right.
Engineers and everything like that, I'm trying to figure out, what are they doing for double-track? I understand appropriation of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, they invoice us as, as they go, then we pay out at a hundred fifty, so this means a hundred fifty right in your pocket. But I'm trying to figure out, what are they doing for double-track?
Well, you can call it what you want, Councilman, you can call it a construction engineer, you can call it an inspection engineer, or you can call it a contract engineer. What it is, is he addresses every pro, every situation that arises a problem, just like the one that. Uh, Madam Chair Deitch pointed out, when we lost the lighting on Franklin Street between eighth and eleventh, he took care of it. That's what, that's what he does, he doesn't walk the line every day, he's not a, like a construction inspector. Because he's a P E, he's, he's in the bullpen, like in baseball terms, a relief pitcher. And when he's needed, he's there for whatever re, he's needed for. Is that satisfactory to you?
And, and, and before I go to the other comments, I'll make another, uh. Addition to what he's saying, like the project over in Laporte, where they had a situation, if you have a P E. Even though it's not necessarily the project, it's a city project that, you know, it's been contracted to someone else. We still have to have some type of oversight to make sure nothing happens, and that's what engineers do. Regardless of where you're at, but from a municipal standpoint, that's kinda what they do. Yes, Councilman Paul Przypulinski?
I, I understand, I appreciate Councilman Dabney's observation. I also appreciate Councilman Don Przypulinski's observation. How much money have we spent to this date on engineers? A hundred and fifty now we're spending, so we already spent fifty, I don't know how much we paid out. Uh, to, uh. Mister Wright during his tenure this year, but the point is, is I think is a very good point on questioning. Why are we paying all this money for the South Shore, the issues that they're causing? See, I, I, and, and I will say this, they have a bunch of trailers out in the pines. And they got their whole construction staff out there because I was in the process of. Investigating something that they were doing on a ditch called Kinsel Dish or Black Dish. On some culverts, and I called Brad Minnick, and I never got a response. I physically went out there myself and talked to their construction engineer. On what they were doing with that culvert and the height and everything, but the point is this. That's right, Mister Minnick can't go over everything, and that's why I believe that. As you do, we brought out, how much are we gonna spend this year? Three hundred thousand dollars? The point is, is that. We, we definitely could hire somebody because I don't know if the mayor wants to talk about the state statute. Because I don't know if a contracted engineer could act as. What an engineer really can do by state statute. By state statute, they have a lot of power. Absolute, they, they don't, they can red-tag a job no matter what is going on in, in the city. They control everything, and I don't, and it's a, a very good point that. I don't know if a part-time engineer on contract can do that for him, or if he ha, he has to be under the employment. Direct employment of the city, so that, that's a good point that we need to look at. Cause if you have a problem with something going on next to you or your house, is that, that engineer. Could red-tag that job no matter what the planning department says, thank you.
Um, well, that's a good point you make, but it's not exactly correct, an inju, a professional engineer. Can't red-tag a job for safety issues, he can only red-tag a job if it's a question of integrity. Of the design or the structural integrity of the project, so what Mister Minnick does. He doesn't address problems that concern NICD and track alignment or track installation. He investigates problems that, that are created by this project, which we've never seen a project like this before. In this area through Michigan City, and how it affects Michigan City, that's all he's concerned about. Is the effect of what this project has on Michigan City, if it affects NICD, they've got their own engineers for that.
Thank you. Any, uh, yes, Councilwoman Tillman?
Um, thank you, Madam President, I just wanted to convey also, and. Councilman Paul Fitzbelinski could contest to this, and Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. I did ask that question, um, in our finance committee meeting today to. Directly to the controller, Controller Hofmaster, if indeed this amount will sustain. For just the, the current projects or for the remainder of the year, will they have to come back to request an additional appropriation? For, if we happen to have any additional projects that's forthcoming? And she assured that this would be a, a, a one-time-only request for appropriations for engineer.
For twenty twenty-two?
For twenty twenty-two.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilman, uh, uh, Sean Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, um, so I'm looking at this, uh, hundred and fifty, I know historically, prior to this administration, actually. We were paying almost a half a million for, uh, engineers, for, uh. Multiple engineering firms in addition to having the, the, uh, city engineer position staffed, uh, part-time or whatever. Um, so I guess, whatever it is, is just the cost of doing business at, uh, the city level, but. Um, see this how, this is, uh, our formal public hearing, can we have second reading?
Are you making a motion?
Make the motion to, uh, have a second reading tonight.
We have a motion to ma, uh, for second reading? Is there a second?
Support.
Um, support by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman, Ms. Nyala on the vote for, uh, moving this to second reading.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mister, uh, Dabney?
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mister Matt?
Aye.
Miss Deitch?
Aye.
Mister Don Przypulinski? Mister Simmons?
Aye.
Miss Jacobs?
Aye.
And Mister Paul Przypulinski?
Nay.
We have seven in favor and two.
All right, I need two thirds vote, so. Um, we are now moving to second reading. Uh, Ms, Ms. Nyala, um, second reading by title only.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local income tax economic development. Formerly known as CEDIT Fund for On-Call Engineering Service with John A. Doyle and Associate. And Primera Engineering, and this is introduced by Miss Jacobs.
Um, any comments from the sponsor? All right, um, as advertised in Herald Dispatch July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, we are now opening the floor for a formal. Public hearing, today, August second, twenty twenty-two. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this, um, ordinance for engineering? Services for a hundred fifty thousand dollars? All right, and again, this is formal public hearing, any comments from the public? With that being said, any? Comments from the public, anybody online? The formal public hearing is now closed, uh, comments from the council on second reading? With that being said, this will be held over. You got a comment?
Yeah, I, I do have a comment. Yeah, I just wanna know what the, uh. Usually when, uh, when you do three readings, you know, at, at a meeting, there's some type of emergency.
We're only doing two, we're not doing three.
Oh, okay.
This is just, first and second, it's moving on to third reading at the next meeting.
Oh, okay, all right, I thought we were gonna try to move through, no, thank you.
Now, this will be held over for third reading at our next council meeting. Ms. Nyala, uh, next ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP coronavirus. Local Physical Recovery Fund for the fourth edition to the initial plan for use of a portion of the city's allotment. Of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies. For various matters, including but not limited to community grant funding for small businesses and nonprofits. City projects, equipment, improvements for certain city departments, and this is introduced by Miss Deitch, Mister Dabney, and Miss Jacobs.
Finally, any comments from the sponsors? Yes, Councilman Brian Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, just wanted to run over some of the things that we're appropriating and, uh. Spending some of the ARP funds on, cause we never ran down the list of some of the things, I'm not gonna just read them all, but I'll cover some of the. Big items that you have heard, uh, us talking about, um, with some different meetings here. Uh, that flock system that we've been talking about is included in here, the Raven system, the, the cameras and the gunshot. Uh, spotters that go with that, water and pipe, uh, for, for the water extension, which, uh, Councilman Paul Przypulinski mentioned early. Earlier, bus shelter project, uh, community grant funds for nonprofits and small businesses. Uh, a fire truck, an expansion of animal control, uh, kennels, animal control vehicle. Uh, body and car cameras, uh, community grant supplies, and, um. Some engineering for the destination playground, of which, uh, Councilman, uh, Don Przypulinski made a presentation about, uh, before. So I believe there's some pretty good, uh, items that we have, and, and I like to call them investments in Michigan City. Um, so I'm looking forward to it, we had, uh, consent in our, uh. Unanimous consent, actually, in our ARP committee meeting, and that's how we come across. Uh, these items that are before us, so we're only on first reading now, but hopefully we can get moving with some of these things, these are gonna be good investments for the city of Michigan City. Thank you.
And there will be a workshop that is hybrid on August the eleventh, and I'll. Confirm the time, right now it's at five, but that will be changing. All right, any comments from, yes, Councilman, uh, Don Yashikis?
Yes, I'd like to, like, chime in as well, Councilman Dabney told us about what, what's be spent, and it was not a frivolous decision. We spent a really long time debating things, and there were things that we did not approve and things that. We suggested go back into the regular budget or find some other sources of funding, so. It wasn't that everyone who came out with their handout got everything they wanted, we really spent some time looking at. What, you know, would benefit the city down the long term, in the long term, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? On this ordinance, comments from the public? All right, comments from the council, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, so the. This appropriation is for seven million fifty-three thousand dollars, what will be left in the ARP fund if this order passed?
I know your bond isn't here, but it's a little over four, four point. Three million, but we'll get the exact dollars, four point three million, I think is the amount.
Thank you.
Additional comments, Councilman Paul Privilinski?
Uh, I would like to be added as a sponsor for this, please.
Thank you, please add Councilman Paul to the ordinance. Any additional comments from the council? That being said, this will be held over for second reading. Ms. Nyala, next ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local income tax. Economic development for formerly known as CEDIT Fund for the Professional Services Associated with the Michigan City Housing Authority. And this is introduced by Miss Deitch and Mister Paul Fitzpatrick.
Comments from the sponsors?
Basically, um, thank you, uh, this was just to, uh, pay the bill for the, uh, hearing that was had for the. The Housing Authority, so, uh, that's all.
Comments from the public, comments from the public? Comments from the public? That being said, comments from the council?
I have one, I had one before, but I don't know if you can hear.
Sorry, yes, yes, Mister Matt, Councilman Matt.
Okay, on, on, uh. On this, I just wanted to just say I'll be voting no on funding this, uh, and, uh, I'm in opposition to it. Uh, as many of you guys know, I was publicly, uh, vocally opposed to the action as far as, uh, we took against. Uh, those four members of the housing board, and, uh, those four members were terminated from the housing board, and, uh, the new members are, are great people. And, but these were great people too, and, uh, you know, my, uh, standing on this was still the same. Um, you know, having, when you, when you hire people and you, uh, develop people, train them and. And it's time to let them go, you wanna have just cause and consistency in that, um. I think these four members were well-known throughout the community, they've got a history of service through the community. Um, they were not terminated for any form of corruption, malfeasance, wrongdoing. Or even being part of the old, uh, regime that actually got us into the trouble, these, this is a, was a newer board. Um, they were terminated for neglect of duty and inefficiencies. And I'll say it again, it's, uh, the Michigan City Government hired an outside attorney, we didn't use our inside attorneys. To dismiss those four members for neglect of duty and inefficiencies, and this was based on a HUD meeting, one hundred percent. Based on one meeting, uh, that was done on April thirteenth, um, and that was the meeting where, uh, they were, um. Uh, accused of, uh, being inefficient in their vote to continue the meeting on. Um, when Zoom protocols and, uh. A, uh, Zoom protocols, I guess, were, were not being followed, um, they didn't conduct any business, they took a vote. Uh, the, uh, meeting, uh, kind of devolved into, uh. Who's got paperwork and who doesn't, and then they, uh, took a break and then they voted and didn't conduct any me, any business. So they were terminated for the inefficiency of that first vote and not the second, uh. Once again, the last meeting I went to, uh, the group of people that have replaced them are very capable people. But it just could, to me, comes down to the premise in the first place, uh, just cause, um, for termination. And, uh, we, we've really set a precedent here, I think, uh, for the, uh, mayor's position in the city. To remove people from boards and commissions for, for these type of reasons. So that's all I had to say, I, I encourage anybody to please watch that meeting on April thirteenth. It's on Alco TV, it's on the YouTube channels, and it's just there for the public consumption, watch the meeting yourselves. And you come to the conclusion if those people were inefficient or, uh, ineffective, thank you.
Thank you, ma, thank you, Councilman Matt, um. I guess I will have a question for Yvonne to get back to us before second reading. Um if this doesn't pass, where does this funding come from? If we can find that, find that out before the next reading. Um any additional comments from the council? Any additional comments from the council? All right, this will be held over for second reading. Ms. Nyla, next ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on uh first reading by title only, an ordinance vacating a portion of public street in the city of Michigan City located north of the intersection of Superior Avenue and Nippsink Avenue, and this is introduced by Ms. Jacobs.
Does the sponsor have any comments?
I do, um this is my understanding of this ordinance in the following one, where there is a electric substation there, and tip, we have easements now allowed around that substation, but they want to secure it by putting a fence around it, so they have to actually take ownership of the land. And to help explain this, we have Mr. Mac Manama on the on the line from Nippsco, oh, he's the attorney, I believe, so he can explain or answer any questions you might have on this process.
Mac, Macima, all right. Yes, Mr. um Macima will allow you to speak now during our public comment.
First, we'd like to thank the council and the clerk for making time and and being flexible uh to allow us to bring this matter before the council. Uh with respect to what the councilwoman advised, um essentially, we were set up, setting out a plan essentially to do some work there to secure the perimeter of the site, and we found a title issue with respect to an unimproved uh platted alleyway or platted roadway. Our request is, is that the city would be kind enough to vacate that so that we could essentially place a perimeter fence around um the area, that triangular shaped piece, so that we can secure it.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the public? Comments from the public? And state your name and address.
Belinda Lee, six zero six Glatter Street, Michigan City. I don't think we should do Nippsco any favors, I think we should sell them the land since they need the land. They want us to do so much for them as a community, um why can't they buy it from us, because they have a pile of money. Clearly, they have a pile of money, because they don't wanna spend their money to do the things that need to be done for this community on behalf of this community. I don't think we should do them any favors, none, zero.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional comments from the public?
Tommy Colovic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, it's actually by statute, it's it's the mayor's duty to sign off on all the deeds of the 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 property the city owns, so I just wanted to add.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Right, comments from the council? Comments from the council? Do you have anything else?
I do have one more thing.
Yes.
Uh, the only thing that I would say is, it is to the benefit of the people in the area, because the fencing is used to prevent vandalism and, you know, interruptions in service, so that would help the community by not having as many interruptions and being, you know, subject to vandalism.
Thank you, Councilman Paul Privlansky.
Well, with that being said, what, how, how, how much uh, what are they gonna fence off a hundred and ninety-three feet in uh lots? What exactly are they gonna, how much of this uh area are they gonna fence off?
It's in, it's in the packet that they gave us.
Well, I'm looking at the map, um I'm looking at the map with the uh easement on uh Nippsco owns all three lots, or four five lots, are they gonna? What's their plan, are they gonna leave, they gonna fence off the whole area there?
Uh, could you, um, can you state your name so I I don't butcher it, I'm Jeremy?
Yes, so my name is Jeremy MacManamaw.
Mac, MacManamaw, okay, um could you kind of explain, um you're basically, can you explain for this particular one, because it looks like the street is basically surrounded by Nippsco lots? Can you explain where the fence is gonna go?
Yes, essentially, the fence would uh parallel the right of way of the road right of way, and would encompass that triangular shaped piece encompassing all of the Nippsco property. That, I have one additional item I wanted to mention, is I believe that Nippsco, the the project engineer has actually filed a SWIP plan, which is a soil-water, uh I always forget what the other pieces are, uh with respect to the environmental, with the locals, and I don't know if that was with Michigan City or if it was with uh the county. But that would have more detail, and I can actually follow up and see if I can get you a site plan, if that's what the council is requesting.
Yes, that would be great, if you can get that to the clerk's office, that would be appreciated.
It will do.
Any additional comments?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions, and uh that was a good point that Councilwoman Deitch brought up. Vandalism, has there ever been any vandalism at this substation? Or interruption of service due to somebody walking by and throwing a twig on a transformer, I mean, what is the what is the real issue here, and why does it have to be fenced off? And why should the city give up property to Nippsco to have this done?
So with respect to the, I'll try to unpack all of that, uh hopefully one piece at a time, with respect to placing a perimeter fence, obviously, that's for security. Um there have been some changes, and some requests from the Department of Homeland Security with respect to protocols for perimeter fencing, uh I'm not an expert on that, that would be a great question, I could redirect back to the Nippsco folks, the engineering team, and see if we can get a clear answer on that. Uh with respect to the vacation of the roadway, um I think Nippsco's goal is, is just to adhere to and follow the Title thirty-six statute, Title thirty-six statutes is set forth in the Indiana Code, and also with respect to Michigan City's municipal code. Um if there is a compensation amount, I don't recall seeing a provision for that in the code, but I'm not an expert um on either the state statute or with respect to the local uh Michigan City Municipal Code for that matter. Perhaps maybe, I don't know if council's there, maybe they can advise.
Just, just a quick question, um is the substation, though, is that secured by fencing? Or not?
So, I I actually do not know the answer to that, I would have to get with the Nippsco team.
Yeah, if you could do that, because I know there, there are some requirements that are federal and state on on substation, so if you can find that out, if the substation is actually secure when you get the other information, that would be great. Um yes, Councilman Don, I'm sorry I interrupted.
Oh, I'm done.
Oh. All right, Councilman Paul, did you have something else on this one?
No, just the same on how they're gonna fence fence it in and um you know, give us a site plan for all three of these vacation, vacating parcels.
Okay. Thank you, um this will, any additional comments? This will be held over for second reading. Ms. Nyla, the next uh ordinance on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance vacating a portion of public street in the city of Michigan City located south and east of the improved terminus of Edgewood Avenue and west and north of West Terminus of the Westchester Port, and this is also introduced by Ms. Jacobs.
Did you have any additional comments, Ms. Jacobs?
No, I think we covered both of them, thanks.
Any uh comments from the public, uh, yes?
Uh Tommy Colovic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I believe that any purchase is a city property that goes through the Board of Works, so I don't even think the council should be hearing this. You know, that's just how I feel, I think the procedure isn't being followed properly.
Yeah, we're not doing a purchase, this is a vacation, so it has to come through us. Um yes, Mr. um MacManamaw, did you have a comment?
Oh, I I do not, I was just listening.
All right, thank you, I guess, Mayor Perry.
Uh, just a question, Madam President, for the attorney, to your knowledge, does Nippsco have any interest in enlarging these substations?
Um I, uh, one point of clarification, I I am actually not an attorney, I actually am a consultant for Nippsco, so I hopefully I I can correct that, um the second part with respect to the expansion of the subs, I do not believe they have plans for expansion of the subs at this time.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from the public?
Daniel Cohen, eight sixteen Madison Street, so Mr. MacManamaw, uh I believe I pronounced that correctly, has Nippsco further uh clarified how they plan on using said property? Or is it just there and they want it?
Great question, um if I may answer that, I as far as the site itself, I currently, as as I am, have been advised, I currently do not know of any plans to expand the sites. I think the intended goal is just to place a perimeter fence and secure the properties.
Yeah, both of these are for fencing, to secure property to 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 secure the premises, the the fencing of the uh area.
From what, raccoons? There's nothing, I doubt anyone's really assaulting Nippsco property on. And is, does this really have any sort of benefit to the community, or is this just like a one-sided street? Because if so, then I don't really think this is quite a.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments, they're appreciated. Just forget. Any additional comments from the public? All right, comments from the council? Comments from the council? This will be held over for second reading. Last ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the aviation fuel fund for the purchase of aviation fuel due to the drastic increase in fuel prices, and this is introduced by um Mr. Simmons and Ms. Deitch.
Any comments from the sponsor? Councilman Simmons?
Yes, I know we require and like for the department head to be here for the first reading, but she has advised me that she was unable to make it tonight, but promised us she will be here for the second reading. Uh having said that, this additional appropriation is because of the inflated cost of fuel this year. And as we all know, this is their source of revenue. So it's imperative that uh you know, they make this additional appropriation at this time.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? All right, comments from the council? Any comments from the council? This will be held over for second reading. All right, new business, the mayor is asking for the advice and consent of the members of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his reappointment of Mr. Tim Warner as a member of the Michigan City Tree Board, and the term will begin immediately and expire eight one, twenty twenty-five. And we did receive um a letter from the mayor.
Uh Madam President?
Yes.
Uh if I may, I don't know if there's gonna be any uh any, any other nominations, but I uh say that we go ahead and vote to reappoint Mr. Warner.
All right, thank you. Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
All right, we have a motion, we have a motion by Councilman Don Privlansky, and a second by Councilwoman Ziegus, Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
I have a question.
Okay.
Is uh, Mr. Warner, is is he the gentleman that lives in Indianapolis?
No.
No, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yep, I know Mr. Warner, I do. Is Mr. Warner, um I should have asked if he was in the audience online or anything, I don't think so, but I just want to double check, all right. Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Deitch?
Hi.
Mr. Don Presmelinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presmelinski?
Hi.
And Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. All right, unfinished business, nominations, we're still working through um the appointments and the changes for the social status of African-American males, um ordinance. Um so we will move on, unless you have some comments, Councilwoman Teff.
Um, yes, the actual amended ordinance um has been finalized, it just has to be presented to the commission um for all um voting members to um sign off on, and there needs to be some amendments again in regards to a many of the minority health partners due to that they are no longer uh participating to be a part of the so- uh social status, and we will also need to amend the Michigan City Area Schools, and to make a vote on if we're gonna change that to just education.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well now, uh public comments, I'll open up for public comments, state your name and your address.
Tommy Colovic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I'm gonna get back to a few meetings ago and all these poor residents are here, I'm gonna read a statute aloud, you already heard this at the neighborhood and and uh meeting that we had for the for the ARP. This is um, has to do with vacant vacant structures. This is an ordinance, I've actually heard our previous city attorney, John Esper, read at a a border works meeting maybe about five years ago when the city was dealing with the ice cream parlor issue, I'm sure we all remember that. Um I found it to be a very powerful piece of legislation, and when he read it, it really stuck and resonated with me, and I'd like to read the the three council members, especially Michael Mack, because this is really prevalent in the third ward. I hope it all sticks and resonates with you all too. Um what this says, it's Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash nine dash four point five, local government. Um in Indiana, especially in urban areas, there is this a large number of unoccupied structures that are not maintained and constitute a hazard to public health, safety, and welfare. Vacant structures often become dilapidated because the structures are not maintained or repaired by the owners or persons in control of the structures. Vacant structures attract children, become harborage for vermin, serve a temporary abodes for vagrants and criminals, and are likely to be damaged by vandals or set ablaze by arsonists. Unkept grounds surrounding vacant structures invite dumping of garbage, trash, and other debris. Many vacant structures are situated on narrow city lots and in close proximity to neighboring structures, thereby increasing the risk of conflagration and spread of insect and rodent infestation. Vacant structures, vacant deteriorated structures contribute to blight, causing decrease in property values, and discourage neighbors from making improvements to their, to to properties. Structures that remain boarded up for an extended period of time also exert a blighting influence and contribute to the decline of the neighborhood by decreasing property values, discourages discouraging persons from moving into the neighborhood, and encouraging persons to move out of the neighborhood. Vacant structures often can create a derate to the point that demolition of the structure is required, thereby decreasing available housing in a community and further contributing to the decline of the neighborhood. The blighting influence of vacant deteriorated structures adversely affects the tax revenues of local government. The General Assembly finds that vacant deteriorated structures create a serious and substantial problem in urban areas and are public nuisances. In recognition of the problems created in a community by vacant structures, the General Assembly finds that vigorous and disciplined action should be taken to ensure the proper maintenance and repair of vacant structures. to ensure the proper maintenance and repair of vacant structures and encourages local governmental bodies to adopt maintenance and repair standards appropriate for the community in accordance with this chapter. We do have those steps in place. Uh, they, they can be found on page five hundred and eighty-one of the mid, moment twenty forty Michigan City Comprehensive Plan. Uh, I'd like to give kudos to our city planning director, Skylar York, and information technologist, uh, Andy Matanic, because they, I, I requested they post a link to the, the comprehensive plan on the city's website, eMichiganCity.com, and they, they graciously did that for me. Um, and I'm not gonna read them all, but I would like to give the hard copy to the, to the attorney to read. And the reason why I'm really bringing this up, because there has not been one single order demolished come before the Board of Works from the time that the new administration took over and you all came in as a council. And I, I feel that's a failure as you all, uh, 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 as a local elected governmental body. That's my comment.
And, and Mr. Kalavich, can you give it to, um, the clerk and then she will make sure everybody gets a copy? Thank you. Thank you. Um, comments from the public? Any additional comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, public comment will be closed. Comments from the council. Councilwoman Dalja Ziegus.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to make an announcement. I know Angie's probably involved in this, but, um, this is for the Michigan City Commission for Women. They're having a gala. It's a ten-year celebration for the Commission for Women. It's going to be Friday, August twenty-sixth, six to ten P M. at the org shrine. Uh, Pat Boyle will be speaking, she'll, Rosa Mathias, Sharon Karns. There's gonna be spoken word performance by Kurnessa Karns and music will be the Gooderhythm, Gooderhythm Trio and DJ Dwight McMillan. So tickets are available. They're seventy-five dollars per person and they're purchased by check, cash, or credit card. Checks paid to City of Michigan City. And then a, all this information on where to get the, uh, you know, tickets is on my website, DaljaZiegus.com. Uh, they want you to R S V P by August twelfth, so this is gonna be a really nice event to commemorate ten years of the Commission for Women. Thanks.
Uh, comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul Prabulinski.
Um, I, Tom, uh, Tom, I, I appreciate your comments. Um, but I will, I will say this. That, that comment needs to be directed at the administration. The administration controls the, uh, people who run these departments in, in our s- community. Um, and that where, that's where the true responsibility lies. We can initiate things, but if they don't wanna get done, they don't get done. It's just like I went to the Border Works to talk about some streetlights by Saint Anthony's that was rejected. I also went to the Border Works to get abandoned telephone poles taken out and, and, or to find out what we had to do as a community with going to our state representative or whoever it might be, or the U R C to get Comcast to do their job. So what, with that, I would like to say this, is that a couple of weeks ago, um, after we had tabled some items at the council meeting. I, I have worked with several administrations since I was elected to public office over these different terms. I worked with Mayor Brillson. I worked with Mayor Beeler. I worked with Mr. Over, uh, Mayor Overly. And I, I wanna say this, is that never, we had disagreements and we always had reconciled to solve problems. And I gotta tell you, this administration does not reconcile. They only, they do not want to move forward. I've never seen an administration like this. It's, uh, to me, when the comments and when we passed our resolution of this favor with the mayor on his comments on the phone, it, it's just not on the phone. He was bashing, me and my brother went running to W F M. a couple of weeks ago. Despicable. It's despicable behavior. You gotta, you wanna sit down and talk as men? Uh, or as, uh, civil individuals, don't have a problem with it. Just like at the meet, our, our, uh, workshop last week got rowdy. He kept interrupting my brother and would not listen to me. Yvonne was interrupting my, my, uh, councilman, Don Presvolinsky. And actually, at one point, I was getting ready to close the meeting, but I didn't. So I, I'm just saying is, is this. People can bash me all they want, but I know one thing, is that I'm gonna do the right thing. And my father told me a long time ago, do the right thing, Paul, and you'll never have a problem. And I will say this. We sat on the council together and we were going to my first council meeting and he said to me, Paul, don't worry about the way I vote. You vote the way you feel that you need to vote. And yes, uh, at that first meeting, we voted on opposite sides of the issues. So I, I'm looking, trying to go in a positive direction here, but it's, it, uh, it gets, uh, kinda stuck in the mud every once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Don Prabulinski.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of items from the safety side of things, okay? Uh, I don't know what the attitude is in Michigan City anymore. But when it comes to stopping at stop signs and at stoplights, I've been, uh, incurred it twice in the last week. Once it was at Barker Ave and Washington Street going south. So I stopped and the car that was going eastbound didn't stop. I mean, they didn't even step on the brake. Just so happened that, you know, I always wait to see if the car's gonna stop before I take off. So that didn't happen. And then the other night, I was sitting at, uh, Greenwood Ave in Franklin Street going northbound. I think it was coming to a meeting down here. Anyway, uh, a car, I'm sitting there at a stoplight and cars just zoom by me right through the stoplight. I couldn't believe it. I'd never seen that before. So I don't know, I'm, all I'm doing is telling people, beware, stop at the stop signs, look both ways. And I know we're all taught that and drivers said if you took driver's ed, but please be careful out there. Uh, the other thing, and I had talked to my colleague, uh, Councilman Simmons and Councilman Dabney about Westcott Park and the condition of Westcott Park. And I did attend the Border Works meeting on Monday and told them of my displeasure on how Westcott Park looks. Uh, and there are weeds and then basically what I've talked about, the grass areas are okay. But the planter areas where there's supposed to be flowers and perennial plants put in, there is weeds that are four feet high, there is trees that are growing. And the lights that light up Charles Westcott's name on the planter are burnt out, so they don't work. And this park was built in honor of an individual that represented many people in Michigan City and had, had a utmost positive effect on many people. And I know that Mr. Simmons can attest to that cause I think that Mr., uh, Westcott was their basketball coach, uh, when you were growing up. But either, either way, and even the pack, the people that lived in the, uh, the Harbor Side Homes, that's the reason that park is there in honor of them. And the city needs to have that respect and needs to supply the wearithall to have that cleaned up and looking professional. The other thing is, it's the gateway to Michigan City. It's the gateway to the downtown. It's a gateway of our beach. So just take this for example. So we wanna make sure that all the petunias are growing okay in the middle of Michigan Boulevard, right? We're paying a contractor to do that work. But forty feet away, you got this sign of a very honorable Michigan City individual that nothing's being done for. And we just put in the, uh, the statues there of the, uh, uh, suffragists, individuals. So I just want, and the Border Works has now grabbed a hold of it. It's their responsibility to get it done. It's on the docket to be brought up all the time to make sure it's gonna get done. So we will see how that progresses. But I just wanted to let my colleagues know about that. And as I said earlier, when it comes to budget time, that Mr. Harris, Branson Harris, when it comes to buying equipment, I want him involved in the budget hearings. So he can tell us, yeah, that needs to be replaced, that needs to be replaced. Or no, you know, that, that's okay. He need, this gentleman needs to be involved. We spend millions of dollars a year every year on motor vehicles and we just go by what a department head comes up and says, yeah, we need that. Transmission went bad on that. I need new tires over there. Hey, there's a little rust on that one. So we need a new co, new, uh, truck over there. So a lot of times that's not the story, but I would like to have Mr. Harris involved. And then just a shout out to the, uh, Michigan City Street Department for a job well done is on the corner of Case and Walker Street, where one of the gentlemen were here, uh, uh, Paige Harris, he was here, I don't know, a month ago, month and a half, go at the meeting with the other folks from the Eastport area. And if I would have lived across the street from where these folks live, I would have been at every council meeting for the last five years, cause it was just deplorable. And I'm not gonna get into the description of the, uh, property, but the street department went down there, did a hell of a job cleaning that mess up. And the person that lives that prob, doesn't live there, but owns that property, actually lives in Chesterton. Okay, and she will be billed for all the work that was done by the city. So I just wanna thank the street department for getting that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the council?
I've got one.
Yes, Councilman Matt.
Uh, just real quick, I, uh, wanted to comment on that A R P. funding piece and, uh, just say that, uh, you know, it, it's nice to see that ball rolling and I am very confident that this will, uh, get the ball rolling on the engineering design and, uh, market maximization, I'll put it that way, for, uh, the, uh, community center slash field house or whatever type of name we wanna put on that type of, uh, endeavor that we're go, looking to do here. Um, I just say, let's make sure we set our expectations extremely high. Uh, and maximize the impact that this, uh, type of thing can happen on a community. Cause personally, I believe that, uh, that is a, a key lynchpin for changing some of our behaviors, uh, that are created, uh, it, that are created from a lack of, uh, those things. So, uh, I'm very confident, whatever else we do with the rest of the money, I'm sure it's gonna be, uh, needed improvements to the city. But that is one that can change a culture if we do it right. So that's all I wanna say. Good job. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the council? Uh, I have a couple. J, oh, yes, Mr. Simmons, I'm sorry.
Yes, just a follow-up on Charlie Westcott Park. I think it's a disservice to Charlie. Was very dear to my heart, uh, that we would allow that area to look as horrible as it has been in the past. Right now, there's some dead trees over there. Uh, and as Councilman Presvolinski was alluding to, this is one of our main thoroughfares to the city. This quarter, people travel uh, to the casino, beach. If we can take care of the planners down Michigan Boulevard, we certainly can make sure Charlie Westcott Park is in tip-top shape. What, how much does it take to send someone over there, cut the dr, cut the grass? Do the weeds and, and that beautiful signage there at, uh, front should always be looking decent where you can read Charlie Westcott's name. I take that as an insult, personal insult. Uh, and I don't wanna hear about, we don't have the staff. Uh, we don't, we this, we that. We don't want, I don't wanna hear excuses. I just want the city to do their job. Even if it takes a little overtime, which it doesn't, which it doesn't. I'm a past city employee. I know how much downtime each department have, each employee have. I, I know the game. I was chief of police here in the city for eight years. It doesn't take that much to go over and clean up a park. We had the same issues out at, uh, Lake Hill, the park right off of, uh, Martin Luther King Drive. You get tired of bringing these issues up because to, to accomplish this is so simple. Every, again, everyone working for the city has a lot of downtime. We used to sit and, and talk about, how many actual hours do we work during the day? And if you're a city employee, please don't insult my intelligence and my fellow constituents sitting up here. We shouldn't have someone having to bring this to the council. We shouldn't have a fellow councilman having to bring this to the Border Works. All we're asking for is a city team do their, do their job. If you, again, if you can take care of the planners all the way down Michigan Boulevard, you certainly can take time out to go over there and pull weeds from around Charlie Westcott's name. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Councilor Jane Simmons. And, and just to, to, to kinda keep, to go down that line along, um, safety and, um, the parks. I know that, uh, we had a conversation previously and I think I, I think you might have been in on that conversation where um, maybe hopefully as we go through this process with, with our, our dollars too. Um, and these neighborhood leadership academies, maybe we can get some of these companies who are focusing on health to help adopt some of these playgrounds and parks within the city and offer some incentive for residents to support these parks and, um, make it become a part of their own and something that they own. And, and that's something we can look at, you know, that's a part of revitalization in neighborhoods, just like Walker Street. I mean, that's an example. That's an example. And we could probably do that in so many neighborhoods, because I know when, even at the, the, uh, Juneteenth Father's Day event, had to go clean up the water tower park before we could have anything. So, you know, that's the responsibility of the city. But if there are some ways that we could support neighborhoods to kinda step in and beautify and give them the resources to help, it might make, you know, a sense of belonging there. So that's one thing. Safety and driving. I had the same situation happen on Springland Avenue, um, Councilman Privilinski, as far as cars. And to the point that I was a little fearful that someone was chasing someone or I don't know what was happening, but they just passed it. Then I watched them turn and slow down. It's Then I watched them turn and slow down. It's just like, it was just weird. But I will say that school starts back on August tenth. So with that being said, to the public, is that please slow down. Um, we're gonna have children walking and catching buses next week. We're starting a lot earlier than normal. Um, teachers already, educators have already started going back. Um, and so we're gonna have children on these sidewalks, walking the, the streets, and, um, you know, if you see something as a resident, maybe we should start taking license plate na, numbers down. But all I know is that I felt unsafe. And, uh, we've had many situations over the last several weeks, and I know there was a community meeting, I wasn't able to attend because I was out of town, but, um, I've never seen a situation where people are shooting out of cars at each other. You know, and it's becoming more prevalent, uh, across the nation, actually. I've been hearing about it in Chicago, but it's happening here. And, you know, people wanna talk about Chicago influence, but a lot of these people are third-generation Michigan City residents that are being arrested and participating in this. It's not, uh, it's not, uh, people from out of town or whatever. They are people who've been born and raised here. And so, you know, there's a lot to unpack in that in itself, um, and I know we have a lot of work to do, and I know that nothing is perfect. Um, you know, people, we will always have, you know, naysayers or bringing up the opposite, but we need to throw everything at public health and safety at this point that we can. Because right now, residents have been here, are citizens that are more seasoned, uh, are impacted, and we have no opportunity for them to voice their opinion because they don't feel safe coming outside. You can't even be safe, you know, in, in your own home in most cases. So we really need to think about that. Um, on a lighter note, I do wanna bring up, um, something that, uh, you all should have received from, from, uh, Mr. Hulse. And in, in reference to, this is a big deal, and I don't, I don't know if everybody understands this, but he shared with us that Michigan City is one of three small cities that have been recommended to be part of a twelve-month study by L I S C. And L I S C. is an organization, uh, I've had some interactions with them and some projects they've done in, in Pittsburgh, but it's called the Local Initiative Support Corporation, and they usually work with large cities. Uh, and actually, one of the national directors is from Michigan City, as a matter of fact, graduated from the school system here, and has, uh, a second home here. So, um, but anyway, it's a twelve-month study by L I S Brookings, uh, and the Brookings Institution, and supported by the Indian Economic Development Corporation. Uh, again, they usually deal with big cities. But what this is, is called the Community Center of Economic Inclusion in Small Cities and Rural Regions, mobilizing Indiana communities for regional economic development. And the reason why this is important, we have a lot of development that's happening. And the what, how this works, the learning lab, um, will assist local organizations in three small Indiana cities to co-create community-centered economic inclusion agendas aimed at closing geographic and racial gaps and economic o, opportunity, and positioning them to maximize state resources from the Indiana Ready Program to benefit from growing sectors of their regional economy. So basically, they will come in and look at workforce development. It could be, uh, early childhood education. They will help create this plan at no cost to the city. And they will be looking to involve community and create cohorts with citizens, with local government, with businesses. And it's been done time and time again in larger cities. But this is the first time that they have really reached out to, to identify smaller cities. So we will be one of three if this, if this moves forward. And, and the first in, in, in this project or learning lab, um, of this sort. So hopefully, more to come, and hopefully, something that, uh, Mr. Hulse can, um, share with us. Um, as it seems that he may become the convener, um, with this. But I think economic inclusion, especially with the growing entrepreneurship base here in Michigan City, is super important. So, um, thank you. So with that, I will call for adjournment.
Madam President, I see this one more thing.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and, well, since the, uh, since the mayor's here, possibly, Mayor, you could pass this on to the street department. Now that you mentioned that school is getting ready to begin. I know that, uh, Councilman Simmons also spoke about stop bars and how important they are to make cars stop. You know, stop signs, that part, you tell the street department to go out and check every crosswalk at every grade school around Michigan City, and make sure that the crosswalk, uh, lines are all painted up to date and visible for vehicle drivers, uh, that are driving their vehicles, so that the children have a safe crossing area by all the schools. So I figured I would tell you that, and you could pass that on to the street department tomorrow, and they could get on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to refer one thing about safety, since you're talking about safety. We're supposed to have a police officer at our meetings, uh, Mayor, can you check, get into that? Thank you. And the chief doesn't count.
All right, uh, can I get, thank you, adjournment, uh.